It is six thirty. The date is May the twenty eighth, two thousand and twenty four. This is a regular city council meeting of the city of Rockport. I'll ask you to stand with us for the pledge of allegiance led by Councilwoman Rangel.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, have a seat. Before we start business and so forth, in a few minutes, we will establish presence of forum. A roll call, Ward one. Ward two.
Here.
Ward three.
Here.
Ward four.
Here.
Mayor here. First item on the agenda is promotion of two individuals in the police department to new ranks and new positions for them, and the police chief, who was also promoted here lately. And it's a privilege to have him back with us.
So these men, they actually were promoted within our department just this past week because we had business to get to. So we had a big, busy weekend over this past weekend. They were promoted just this past weekend. It went into effect Saturday. And so I wanted to give recognition to these men for the accomplishments that they've done. And so Captain Payne is on my far side over here. Captain Payne came to us from Victoria Police Department. He's been with us for two years now, and he's got a very similar background to me whenever I was in Lubbock. And so he was a sergeant, a supervisor over there, special operations division, their narcotics division, spent a lot of time managing people and managing operations. And so he was a perfect fitting for our criminal investigations division. So now he's going to be heading our criminal investigations division and our detectives within the department. So we're happy to have him on the department. So this is Captain Payne. Lieutenant McKeska, he came with us from, his history is also with the Victoria Police Department, and then he went into private practice for several years. And then we picked him up from the Shiner Police Department, where he was a supervisor with them. He has a lot of supervisor experience. He has some advanced leadership training as well, whenever he was with the Victoria Police Department. And so he was also a perfect fit to supervise one of our patrol divisions. And so that's what he's doing now. He's going to be the supervisor of one of our patrol divisions soon to be going tonight pretty soon, right? During the summertime, which is the great time to do it. So I wanted to introduce and recognize these two men. It's Captain Payne and Lieutenant McKeska.
Chairman, we're proud to have you. Thank you very much. Great to have you. Next item on the agenda is citizens to be heard. At this time, comments limited to three minutes will be taken from the audience from persons who have signed their speaker's card located at the table in the back of the training room of the service center and delivered to the city secretary before the meeting begins, or written comments received by four P M. on the day of the meeting. On any agenda item or any other subject matter will be read in the meeting. Persons wishing to address the council and who have registered using the citizen participation form will have up to three minutes to speak. In accordance with the Open Meetings Act, the council may not discuss or take action on any item that has not been posted on the agenda. While civil public criticism is not prohibited, disorderly conduct or disturbance of the peace is prohibited by law, shall be called for the chair to terminate the offender's time to speak. I have two cards. The first one, Malcolm Deco. If you'd come up and give your name and address, and be sure that the microphone's picking you up, Malcolm.
Thank you, Mayor. Name is Malcolm Deco, six eleven Wood Street, here in Rockport, Texas. I'm the chairman of the Aransas County Navigation District. And I have been asked to read this to you all, and that's what I'm going to do. Today, the Aransas County Navigation District voted to reject the city's latest proposal in its current form, but remains hopeful to reach an agreement with the city council. More than two years ago, the city of Rockport announced plans to run an additional stormwater grain into Rockport Harbor. The Aransas County Navigation District, the agency charged by the state of Texas and citizens of Rockport, who serves as the conservator of the Aransas County coastline, was not included in the planning and has raised serious environmental, economic, and health concerns. All were disregarded by the city and their determination to increase the stormwater discharge directly into the water bodies that are vital to our community, that being Rockport Harbor. Over the years, the district has made three appropriate offers, all of which were rejected. All of the district's initiatives were also rejected or ignored. The city of Rockport, once again, without any environmental or engineering studies, has announced a plan to force the district into accepting additional stormwater that would include large quantities of silt, chemicals, and other runoff from significant areas of the city. They plan to implement this through Veterans Park while still refusing to conduct an environmental study. Such environmental and engineering experts, several environmental and engineering experts are skeptical of the city's assertions that there will be no damage from an additional three by six culvert carrying stormwater into its contents into Rockport Harbor. In addition, no proof of the city's assertions have been provided. The city has only provided the district and the citizens of Rockport with verbal assurances that nothing in their plan could possibly go wrong, all the while refusing to put this guarantee in writing. The city is now threatening to condemn a portion of Veterans Memorial Park. Meetings have been held with the city, by the district, to find a solution and do the right thing. However, the city has refused to take any responsibility for any consequences of this ill-advised action. The city cannot stand by and allow the harbor to be further degraded. The Aransas County Navigation District unanimously opposes the condemnation of the Veterans Memorial Park property and the additional extensive discharge of some stormwater chemicals associated kill silt and other unknown waste into the harbor. The district is committed to fighting the condemnation lawsuit on behalf of the citizens to protect our precious coastline, Rockport Harbor. We implore you to cease this ill-advised condemnation action and engage in meaningful dialogue with the district. The district stands ready to find a resolution. By doing so, this community can avoid huge litigation costs that would better be spent on environmental studies and protocols necessary to prevent such detrimental actions. But I was required to read, and now let me state, and I'm running out of time, that we came a lot closer to reaching an agreement than we've ever been before, but simply we run out of time. Now it's in the hands of the lawyers. I have nothing against lawyers, but I'd rather stay here to reach an agreement than have the lawyers.
Thank you, Mayor.
Still available to continue this negotiation. There's really only one or two sticking points, and I offer my services at any time for anybody to get this done without making lawyers richer than they already are.
Appreciate it, thank you, Mayor. Next item on the agenda is consent agenda. Following items may be acted upon in single motion. No separate discussion or action on any of these items will be held unless pulled at the request of one of the members of the council. Anybody wish to remove either of these items from the agenda?
There was another.
I wish you to, I beg your pardon, I have got another card here. They brought it to me a little while ago, and I said I can't read it. Shiloh Mitchell. And I should have known, you were right back there, I should have seen you.
Thank you for accepting my request to speak. I'm here just as a citizen of Rockport to tell you all thank you so much for your service. I know you don't get told thank you enough, so thank you to Ms. Shelley, number one, for rescheduling the hot funds orientation. That was a huge relief to those of us that had plans for graduation, and she deserves some kudos for that. And I just want to stand here and tell you all thank you, because you're amazing. You serve our community in amazing ways, and I have two minutes and thirty-three seconds to tell you about that. Andrea, thank you for all the ways that you serve the community in your ward. Mr. Bundret, I don't know your first name. Thank you for the ways you serve your community in your ward. You did have lunch at Houdat today. I'm sorry I didn't get by your table and say hi. Mayor, I see you everywhere I go. Thank you for the ways you serve. Mr. Ward two, I don't know anything about you, but I will Google you tonight. Ms. Stephanie, thank you for all the ways you serve our community, and I'd like to share with you, our friend that was in the motorcycle accident last October came to visit last week and drove himself home. So I won't bore anybody else. Ms. Vanessa, thank you. I don't know everyone else's names. Thank you. Can we give them a round of applause? Thank you for your service.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
I believe I have some important information to share with everyone. Honorable mayor, city council, this city manager, staff, and fellow citizens. I'm Doug Webb, one thirty Lamar Drive. Pause. I think that if I would say Edward Law firm, many would say in capital letters, we know the law. Pause. I'm Deb Webb. I know fishing. I have been here for seventy years, fishing here for seventy years, and I've seen it all. Presently, our fishery is weak, and our trout, our trout fishery is weak. Our redfish fishery is only average. I have an RV park, and I have multiple serious fishermen. They use artificial, they use live shrimp, and they, most of them use croakers at this time. They go out, the last few months, they go out, and they don't get a bite on croakers, or maybe two-two bites, or maybe catch a couple dinks. It costs over a hundred dollars for these folks to drive down here, and a hundred or more dollars to go out in the boat. Costs over a thousand dollars to go out with a guide, and they don't do much better. And while I'm going through this, the reason I'm talking about this is when these people stop coming, slow down, it's going to affect the economy of all of the coastal cities immensely, every, every layer of businesses. The Parks and Wildlife, Parks and Wildlife has put out a new, the new set of rules. It's three trout from fifteen to twenty inches and one over thirty inches. I don't know how many of you fish with croakers, but you get a bite, you give them a little slack, and you set the hook. That works real fine for smaller fish, but the larger fish, twenty, twenty-three, twenty-six, they eat it all, and they're gone. When you set the hook, you're going to get them in the gills, or you're going to get them in the stomach, and they're going to die. They're very fragile fish. When they bleed, they die. And there's going to be a lot of these fish thrown back, which is going to be frustrating. It's going to the law, and it's the law, but that's going to happen. But we're going is, this compromise will not get our fishery back to where it needs to be. I've talked to Dr. Chris Mace at the hatchery over here. He agrees. All these biologists say it won't work. You cannot replace the fishery with the, with nature. Can't happen. We have too many porpoises, we have too many, too many, too many fishermen increasing pressure all the time, as well as nature's not very friendly lately. What I would like for y'all to do is to contact the congressman in the name of the city and order them, we send them hundreds of thousands of dollars every month, right? We need to get fisheries put in and...
We appreciate it, Mr. Webb, thank you.
I was going to say, I have a list of people here that can call on me, and I can answer questions.
Yep, city secretary, we try to take care of that.
That was a chop, sir.
Yes, sir. All right, consent agenda. Is there anyone wishes to have either one of these items removed from the agenda? If not, do I have a motion on the consent agenda?
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number five, consider the adoption on second and final reading of ordinance number nineteen thirty-four, amending the official zoning map as stipulated under Article four point one, the city of Rockport zoning ordinance number ten twenty-seven, by changing the zoning of land from R two, second, single-family dwelling district for property located at four twenty-four Eloise Street, also known as Lot fourteen Civileto subdivision to R five, second multifamily dwelling district, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date. Any changes since first reading? Okay, thank you. Any question, council?
I do have a question for...
Sure.
Should I wait for her to get up here?
Yeah. That way your answer's recorded.
A question I had, if we choose to go from R two to R five in that, on this particular instance, the, what I'm concerned with is the other folks that might be in an R two that have a larger lot, quite a bit larger, that, you know, would then request to go to R five, and that would allow them to do things that are, seem to be outside of a single-family neighborhood, you know, multifamily apartment complexes, things that we probably don't have in our zoning intent and what have you, in master plan. Can you elaborate and tell me what we have to protect us from that happening?
Yes, sir. So this particular rezone is only to bring them into compliance for what it's been being used as all these years. It's not because they want to do apartments or anything. And this particular lot is nine thousand square feet. Now, the R five zone requires a minimum of five thousand square feet of lot and twenty-two hundred square feet of lot per dwelling. So this particular lot would only be able to have four dwellings, and that's if they took away what they have and built new. Another person wanting to come in and rezone to multifamily R five on their lot would have to present engineered drainage, water and sewer usage increases, and it's, I don't believe that would pass.
And we have the ability if, if, again, if the situation is that they're in a neighborhood of single-family homes all around, and we would have the ability to stop an apartment complex from going right in the middle of that and what could be...
Well, that depends. If they come in with one lot, yes, they would not have the square footage required. They would have to come in with some acreage to be able to do an apartment complex, because, like I said, it's required to have twenty-two hundred square feet of lot per dwelling. So none of those lots are big enough to do that. And if they came in with acreage in that area with a plan, with their engineered drainage plan, with their civil plan all approved, then...
And we would have the notifications to all the neighborhood.
Oh, absolutely. Then you would, you would be obliged to say yes or no.
So there's safeguards in place.
I believe so. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
Move to approve item five as presented.
I have a motion, I have a second.
I have a second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number six, consider the adoption of the second final reading of ordinance number nineteen thirty-three, amending chapter ninety-eight, traffic and vehicles, Article six, golf carts, off-highway vehicles, section ninety-eight dash one thirty-four, authorized inspection facility and entity requirements, providing a savings clause, severability clause, and an effective date. Chief, any changes since last time? Have no changes. Any questions, council?
Chief, I have a question that's asked me. This just increases our ability, the inspection facilities, correct? It increases the inspection facilities if we have applicants that apply for the process, yes. Any golf cart sales, golf cart maintenance, or auto maintenance facility in Aransas County is eligible to apply.
Okay, that's, I move to approve item six.
I have a motion, I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number seven, consider approval of the first reading of an ordinance nineteen thirty-five, amending code of ordinances, chapter ninety-four, taxation, Article four, hotel occupancy tax, and add to additional Texas tax code uses categories, repealing all ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for severability, providing an effective date. That's good one.
So this arrives from the last meeting where we discussed with you the different hot texts, two other categories that we were not using according to our ordinance. And so by adopting this, this would put the two categories in, which are the signage directing tourism, and then it would also allow for sporting promotional of sporting events in a county with a population under a million.
Okay. Questions, council?
I move to approve item seven as presented.
I have a motion, I have a motion and a second. Any further questions?
She's feeding me a second. It's her my thing, Andrea. Hurry up!
If there's no other question, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
And four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Consider approval of first reading ordinance nineteen thirty-six, amending ordinance number nineteen thirty-two, which amended the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four budget, beginning October first, two thousand and twenty-three, and ending September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-four, repealing all prior ordinances in conflict therewith, providing for publication, providing for an effective date. This is related to two thousand three hundred twenty-two dollars and sixty-five cents, police department training account. Mr. Sherrell.
Yes, sir, thank you. Good evening. I guess we usually receive one allocation of the Texas law enforcement education funds. This year, we received a second one ostensibly because the eighty-eighth legislature approved an additional amount. The police department would like to appropriate that for this year's use, and the restricted funds for training.
Questions, council? Not, do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve. Then I am numbering eight.
I have a motion, I have a second, I have a second right now. This is fast me. Any questions?
If they had a question.
There are no further questions, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it is unanimous. Item number nine, consider the approval of resolution twenty twenty-four ten R, declaring certain city property surplus and authorizing the sale of said property for their public purpose and establishing effective date. This comes from the vehicle maintenance. There he is.
I'm Delmar, naturally manager of the city of Rockport. So this, for disposition of surplus property, this is a transparent way of disposing any property that's been used, that's useful life cycle.
And we've been doing this for years and years and years.
Been doing this for years.
Any questions, council? If not, do I have a motion?
Make a motion to approve agenda item nine as approved.
I have a motion, I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Okay. Item number ten, consider approval of the construction change directive number one for the city hall project in the amount not to exceed one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. Kimberly.
Yes, Mayor, council, thank you. Just to further ask if y'all have any questions regarding the difference between a change order and a change directive. Does that understand? Okay, so just... All right, so a change order is what we've been doing to date, and we've done that for items one through nine, and those actually change the dollar figure for our contract agreement. Whether it's a plus or minus, it changes the directive and, excuse me, changes the total dollar figure we are committed to. A change directive says we both want to go in the same direction, but we kind of disagree on the cost of said direction, so we're going to continue to negotiate it, but we're keeping the wheels rolling. So we're keeping the project moving, and while we're negotiating some of those costs, not only with T O, but with P G A L or whomever else we're working with. Does that make sense? All right, on the change directives that we have in, with y'all today, the first one was doing solid surface windows in the main areas where we have the utility building clerks, musical court, and parks offices. So making sure we had, instead of using P LAM, we are utilizing quartz. And then item number two was interiors, power ceilings, some changes were made up there. That one was actually no cost to us. Item number three was adjustments to some masonry, where the masonry and concrete meet on the, the loggia up on the second floor. Item number four was the spray foam insulation, the attic. This is, again, one of those things where we're still negotiating with individuals. However, it was removed from the V E, and now it's being put back in, excuse me, V E value engineering, and now it's being put back in at this date and time. Item number five is adding electricity for the sinks in the restrooms. That was missed at one point, so we're adding those back in. Item number six, modifying millwork in the administrative workroom, and it's basically we, once it was installed, they were like, that doesn't fit our copier, so we're having to make a small adjustment there. Item number seven is the wood chair rail during value engineering. We removed chair rails for most of the rooms, but this was one of the rooms where we left, got wallpaper on the bottom and paint on the top. You need something to kind of transition through that area, and so we're needing to put that back in, in this room only. And item number eight is the backsplash in the break room upstairs for the staff area. It was designed, it was made into P LAM during value engineering, but during, at this time, it was needed to be a more tile instead of P LAM to coordinate with the rest of the building. So those are, at this time, a maximum of one hundred and twenty-four thousand seven hundred and thirty-five dollars and thirty-one cents. We are still negotiating those fees, but we need to move forward, and we would request that the council approve this change directive. Any questions?
Questions?
Do you think this will be the way we move forward as the change directives? If we have, sorry, if we have other issues moving forward, do you think this is kind of the road we'll go down?
Yes, probably.
Okay, I mean, it's, it's not unfair to either change order, just gives the, I don't, I think this is better. Do you see more of these coming between now and...
Yes, sir.
The end.
There's still a few items where we're working on what we want, where we want it and type of thing, so they can't very well give us an estimated price before we finalize the design of those pieces.
Anyone else?
And just to clarify, is this still within budget, or now we over-budget with these changes?
So it is still within the overall budget of the process, but we did set some money in two thousand and eighteen, some money was put into reserves, and that those are, if we have to still draw down, we are still within budget this month.
Other questions?
Would just like to say thank you so much for keeping everybody abreast of the situations and the monies being spent, and making everybody stick to their guns on the dollar.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you, Kimberly. I have a motion.
I make a motion to approve agenda item number ten.
Ten, yes.
As read. I have a second.
It is ten, yeah. I have a motion and a second. Any further questions? If not, we'll call for a vote, Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye, it's unanimous. Item number eleven, consider approval contract with Rentalscape platform contract for the short-term rental... contract for the short-term rental I D and monitoring program for the purpose of performing certain data analytics services to include the registration, management, hotel occupancy, tax, payments, and notifications regarding the City of Rockport Short-Term Rental Program. Ms. Dietrich?
Yes, sir. So this is the program that we've been referencing throughout this S T R project. Rentalscape has more options than the Granicus one had. We didn't get a bid from Granicus, we got the tips. I'm gonna be honest, I am totally uneducated in the buy board system and the, how all that works. But the bid we got from this was through tips? Help, help me. S H I, yes. It's a cooperative, yes.
Just like buy one, doesn't have to go out for
Thank you. I feel stupid even trying to talk about it. But this is the request for that program. And what I've, what I've told folks and what my plan is, our plan is, once we get this up and running and we, we know what we're doing, I want to hold a town hall and invite, personally invite all the real estate companies, put it in the newspaper, on our website, anybody that wants to come, and walk them through how this program works and how they go on there and get registered or re-registered and schedule their inspection. So that it's not a huge mass mess. So that's my plan anyway.
Okay.
I think kitchen's always important. And I, I feel like that idea of having to go and talk to the individual partners that would be dealing with that and helping them get on board and learning this stuff. Just to, again, for other people, I know we just say these words and people are like, what? Bid board, can you explain that a little bit, what, what that is? It actually goes for bids and we are learning different costs.
Right, it's a cooperative purchasing agreement where they've already done the competitive bidding for us. So a, a third party has bid it and put the best value and everything up there. And, and you can basically choose from items legally within the Texas purchasing law. You can choose from things on the buy board because they have been competitively bid already, so.
Just know we throw out words and people are probably like, what?
Yep.
So I'm just trying to explain what that is. Yeah, I really do, I really thank you for wanting to do workshops. I think that's great to have that knowledge out there and help them, so. They'll help you guys who want them.
Thank you.
Any other questions, concerns? If not, we need most
Make a motion to approve agenda item number eleven as read.
All right, I have a motion, I have, I have a second.
I'll second.
I have a second. He had his hand up, but you got there first. You did good. All right, motion, second. Any further question? If not, we'll call for a vote. Ward one.
Aye.
Ward two.
Aye.
Ward three.
Aye.
Ward four.
Aye.
Mayor, aye. City manager update.
This month, you don't have to listen to me. We have our, our city engineer here to update you on the projects that we're working on.
How's it going?
Hi, my name's Anthony Allen. I work for Urban Engineering. I've met most of you guys on the last council meeting. Mayor, nice to meet you.
Good to meet you.
So some of the projects we're working on, right now we're working on engineering plan and plat reviews. Currently, we're working on the Maria P U D, Plan Unit Development Review, Palms Plat Review, and Daniel's Forest Subdivision Plat Review. Currently working on the wastewater treatment plant discharge permit renewal agreement. Sent that over to the city staff today for the twenty twenty-five discharge permit. It's required in twenty twenty-five. So current project under construction is the wastewater treatment plan improvements. The grit removal, we're waiting on the return of new grit equipment that was sent back last week to be regalvanized due to quality condition of the metal components when delivered. The digester and thickener was excavated four feet down for the foundation, and we're waiting on well point equipment to be able to go deeper. The new office slab has been formed up, and we're waiting on the electrician and the plumber to get their underground piping installed. Contractor has saw cut the existing concrete pavement at the existing office in preparation for removal to allow the electrical duct bank installation. And the electrician is planning to get Newberry conduit duct bank installed from the existing office to the new office. Urban Engineering has been receiving and reviewing material submittals and R F Is. To date, we have received forty-seven submittals and three R F Is. The Gaggon Lift Station, new twelve-inch force main from Gaggon Lift Station to the wastewater treatment plant, project is complete. Final pay estimate and documentation was submitted to the city on May twenty-first, twenty twenty-four. We're currently working on analysis for a future second wastewater treatment plant. Mark Maroni, our most senior engineer, has been working with Candace Brandon to complete the flow and capacity analysis on the existing plant. And our goal is to complete the report and have a meeting with city staff in two weeks. So some of the future projects that we're working on are the Enterprise and Maple Drainage Improvements. The plans have been submitted to FEMA for review. A hundred percent plans are completed, and we're just waiting on FEMA comments to move forward with that project. The Texas Department of Agriculture funded Kluge Trail and Holly Road reconstruction. We are working on an agreement with Grantworks. That's the final piece Grantworks needs to move forward with design and then construction. So we'll have that agreement over to them by next week. The FEMA Hazard Mitigation Generator Applications. There are three generator applications for six generators. Application one for Rockport Fire Station and Highway one eighty-eight Pump Station. Application two for Ivy Lane Pump Station and Highway one eighty-eight. It's another Highway one eighty-eight Pump Station. And application three for mobile generators to power the city's lift stations. So applications are currently under FEMA review. T C or the T D M representative Joseph Quineton, I actually met at a conference last week on Thursday and went, as he was walking out the door, went and shook his hand and said, hey, how about our generator applications for Rockport? And he said, City of Rockport should have no problems getting that approved. Those were the words, the exact words he told me, so. Aransas County Basin Thirty-nine Drainage Improvements. Amendments are being processed by the G L O, and this is an Aransas County project that was initially in the City of Rockport's scope of work for the C D B G. And I, I, I'm not sure the details, but it was removed and then put back into the Aransas County's responsibilities. And, but this is a installation of four thousand two hundred fifty foot of ditch cleaning and reshaping, fifty linear feet of box covert and nine thousand five hundred square yards of pond cleaning and reshaping at Aransas County Basin Thirty-nine. Last project currently under construction is the C D B G-funded drainage, C D Y Drainage Improvements. So project one, trailer and two-leaf drainage improvements, construction has not yet started. Project four, South Ann and East Hackberry Drainage Improvements. Contractor is approximately ninety-five percent complete. Remaining activities are seeding and fertilizing, curb repair, cleaning and restoration. Project five, Marketed Church Drainage Improvements. Contractor is forty-two percent complete. The remaining activities are the installation of eighty linear feet of thirty-inch R C P, construction of inverts and raising the junction boxes to grade, installation of outfall at Aransas Bay, and asphalt pavement repair. Project six, Sabanol, Anne, Orleans, Laurel, and Magnolia Drainage Improvements. Contractor is forty-two percent complete. The remaining activities are Gare Underground has completed the remaining utility work, not completed by Burnside. They're waiting on a resolution for the latent defects. We are, we did compile a hundred and twenty-page report for the city to assist in that effort for the latent defect. Conversations with the bonding company, so we just got that over to the city last week. So I believe that's it. Great, you guys have any questions?
Any way we can get that sent on, right?
Yes.
A lot of information that we can put on our, like, just for us and put it on the city pages as well, so people can read on it.
I apologize, it was requested last time, and I was out all week last week and was, tried to scramble to, to kind of figure everything out over yesterday and today. So I will have that for everybody on the next council meeting. And I can compile this and put it in a comprehensive, comprehensive list for everybody after this meeting, so later this week.
That would be great, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I understand, I just, that would be really helpful, so we can digest it a little bit more.
I completely understand, yes ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Anthony.
You mentioned, when you were talking about the repairs that are going on, that wastewater treatment facility, that one of the components came back and failed inspection or something?
So, and I don't know the exact details, but the galvanizing didn't look, didn't, was not satisfactory. So we got sent back for regalvanizing.
Okay, any significant delays with that that we're going to experience? Or is it, the vendors said, hey, it's our fault, we're going to take care of it?
Yeah, I, I don't believe there's any kind of change order or anything like that, that wasn't discussed. I haven't heard of any delays yet, off the top of my head. It's something I can ask and find out and provide with the, the comprehensive list. So I'll, I'll get that question answered.
Long as it's not going to slow down the repairs and cause any kind of issue or shutdown or anything.
Yeah, and, and so the engineer, Mark Maroni, is the, has worked at Urban Engineering for the longest out of anybody there. He's been there since before Jim Urban was there, and is Jim Urban's best friend. He designed, I think, that wastewater treatment plant and the one in in Port Aransas, so it's, it's in good hands. If he says it needs to get sent back, it needs to get sent back.
Sounds like we've got good eyes on it.
Yes, sir, yep. Another update, we had a, our construction manager, Neil Patel, come inspect the Gare Underground work today. And he's very involved. So it's a new asset we have to our company. We've never had a construction manager before, but he's more involved putting eyes on the projects and is a good asset to our team to help the city and us have successful projects, so. Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, as council reports. Ward one.
Actually, don't have too much to report this time around. Did want to congratulate and formally welcome you, Matt.
Thank you.
Ward two.
Ward two. My update is I've got a new accurate map coming with all the edges of Ward Two and looking forward to getting out there and meeting some folks I haven't met before. So should have that new map here pretty shortly. Making progress.
Good to have you, thank you. Ward three.
Nothing real big to report. I'll keep it short this way.
Ward four.
Well, I have a couple things. I went to the, our chamber monthly meeting, and they are doing their annual changing of the gavel on June eleventh. So we have Chad Lee is leaving, and then we have Amy Garcia coming in. So that is an event that they have to hold on every year, and it's pretty big and important. So if anyone's ready to go and support them, that's great. There was the tree committee met last week. They discussed a location for our billboards. I think they decided on three different locations instead of one that cost a little bit more than the three altogether. And then they also discussed, they reviewed the mitigation balance and just kind of went over those numbers. And then they discussed how to water the city plants a little bit better. I think a couple of them were concerned, but I know you guys are doing the best you can, so I'm hoping you guys find a solution on that. And I think, and then we had Memorial Day weekend. I think it was busy in town. We had the Wine Fest, that was a great event. And it was just, I think it went pretty well. Hopefully, there wasn't too many disturbances or anything, but it was busy around here, so. That's about it on my end.
Among those lines, the Chamber banquet is scheduled on June eleventh, which is a meeting day. I think Shelley has gotten with all of you, but we'll have that meeting at four thirty. We'll start at four thirty. We'll keep the agenda light so everybody can go home and get ready for the banquet.
Okay. For me, we had Memorial Day gathering yesterday down at the Veterans Memorial Park, and it was well attended, we had a lot of people there. We had a Korean War veteran there, which those guys are getting on up in years now. And I would have to just about say the same thing for a lot of our Vietnam folks. And that, that was my age group of folks. Some of those guys are really getting old, I don't know why they're doing that, the rest of us are not. But there was a great group of people down there. Whoever the M C was did manage to miss one of the local dignitaries that was there. And somebody pointed out that, that Pat was there, and I said, yes, Pat Rios. And it was Pat Russo, and they don't even look alike. So, so anyway, Commissioner Russo was there, and I had to apologize for her for calling her Pat Rios. But there was a great group of people there. We had a gentleman that was presented with a Purple Heart for his service and time. He was injured, I believe, in Afghanistan when the Humvee he was in was blown up. We had a lot of dedicated people there that have a massive military service in the service of our country. And it was pointed out Sunday by some folks at church that when those people took an oath, it was to preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And so many of those people died trying to do that. And it was good seeing the number of people that were there to honor the memory of those people. And if you didn't make it, try to make one of those things. They are, it, it's a very touching thing. There were a lot of tears in a lot of people's eyes before we got out of there, good. But I appreciate that. City council recess and open meeting to reconvene an executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code, section five five one point zero seven one, consultation with attorney. Seek the advice of an attorney about pending contemplated litigation or settlement offer, known a matter in which duty of the attorney to the governmental body under the Texas disciplinary rules, professional conduct, and state bar of Texas, clearly conflicts with this chapter. Number one, City Hall. Number two, Concho Street, General Land Office, G L O Drainage Projects. Number three, Data Pro Settlement. We are in executive session, it is seven sixteen.
We are back in regular session.
Motion to adjourn.
I have a motion, motion and second we adjourn.
Got it. Steph.